Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our special Sioux Falls City Council meeting Thursday, March 7, here at 10:30. Thanks for being here. Before we do a roll call, I want to also just thank the council. We've had to have some special meetings and kind of wonky schedules. You guys were here just 12 hours ago, but with the way we have to notice things and so forth, I appreciate your attention to these meetings. It means a lot, so thank you. So, Tom, we'll have a roll read. Just note again, some of our councillors are joining us via phone call today. Councilmember Starr?
Here.
Staley?
Here.
Recky?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Kylie?
Here.
Nitzer?
Here.
Selberg?
Here.
Sale?
Here.
All right. I would ask that you all rise for a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll move on to item three, approving our regular agenda.
Move to approve Erickson.
Second. All right. Motion approved by Erickson and seconded by Selberg. Any discussion, council? We'll vote on that, please. Councilmember Starr?
Here.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. So, we will move on to that item, item number four. Item four, second reading and ordinance adopting the Sioux Falls Board of Health Business Regulations pertaining to the novel coronavirus COVID-19. Hi, Jill.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Jill Franklin, Public Health Director with the City of Sioux Falls. So, we're here today to talk about this item, which is going to revise some of our mitigation efforts in our community. And to get us started, I just want to make sure once again, so that everyone in our community is aware of what we're trying to aim for around this time period with this pandemic and how it's affecting our community. Again, we're trying to limit and slow the spread of illness and minimize the death that we encounter in our community. And we're trying to preserve the continuity of our community essential functions and services, trying to minimize social disruption in this time period, trying to minimize economic impact during this time period, and we're working very hard to coordinate messaging and to keep the public well-informed during this time. So, I have some more data for you today, and so if you can just go ahead and take a look at this, this is similar to what we've shared in the past with you, and this is something we share on a daily basis in our EOC and during our briefings. Have this changed so that you can see from the highest per capita rate to the lowest, but these are our peer communities that we've been really trying to follow closely and understand. And you can see our region is definitely starting to climb up there with Sioux City leading the way with the per capita rates of cases. And then also, you can see off to the right, I know there's been some questions about how much of a death rate are we experiencing in our community, and so you can see that off to the right as well. So, you can see as of yesterday, we had a 9.41 rate of death in our community, and then also for our cases per capita, we're at 950. It's notable, and I want you to be aware, that we did have today an increase. We've been hovering in the 30s, 40s, 50s for quite a few days of rates of cases, but we did see 101 cases reported today, okay, in Minnehaha County and one case in Lincoln County. We are expecting that. We expected that to happen. We're doing this week, community testing. There's a lot of asymptomatic people that we're diagnosing with COVID, and so this is something we expected. And I'll share with you on an upcoming slide how that relates to then our hospitalization rate. But I just want you to be very clear, and we expect that to happen over about this next week time period, that we will see increase of cases of COVID. But we're monitoring our hospitalization rates very carefully along with the number of cases. So, just want to make sure that's clear. So, this is that modeling that we've been sharing with you. And just once again, to orient you, that bar line, that bar across, that's between 600 and 700, that kind of grayed-out area there, that is identifying the capacity that the health systems believe that they have to be able to take care of us in Minnehahn, Lincoln County, or Sioux Falls, for sure. And so, you can see a few weeks ago now that when we provided that modeling data to you, that first curve that goes a little higher and extends beyond 700 is what we anticipated based on the number of cases at that time and number of hospitalizations, that we were going to probably edge above the capacity just slightly. And that was based on a 25% mitigation strategy. So, the things that we've been doing in our no lingering ordinance have been getting us about a 25% mitigation. So, we thought that that's where we would land at that time. We then remodeled based on hospitalizations we were starting to see, and it's that second surge or that second curve that you see that's a little lower, that's getting us just slightly under 500, was what we were now saying we expect that we'll probably see. So, that was good news, and it was news that we identified we're going to make us feel, or at least helps us feel a little bit better about the idea of expanding some of our mitigation efforts or decreasing some of our mitigation efforts and opening up some of our restaurants, bars, et cetera, in our community to some capacity. So, that's, again, the peak of that would say that on a given day, at our peak, we would estimate that we would be, I think the number is 498 people that would be in the hospitals in Sioux Falls, for Sioux Falls, Minnehahn, Lincoln County, on a given day at the peak of our surge. Okay? That's that second lower hump. What you can see then continuing on is throughout this time period, so those blue or yellow bars that are below, day by day, that's our actual hospitalization rates. So, that's what we're also following and trending based on our modeling. And so, that has been remaining very, very flat, and I've got a couple of reasons for, I've got some remarks about that, but also, that hospitalization being quite flat is making it difficult for us to provide an updated modeling for you today. We're going to continue to follow. It's good news, to be sure, our hospitalization rates, but we also want to see just a little bit more time period before we can actually model now where we think that'll go from here. But that is good news for us at this time period. But I want to show you the next slide so that you can understand a little bit about why we think that we need to just let some of the actual data play out before we remodel this moving forward. So, right now, you can see where we're at with our age population distribution in Sioux Falls. You can see that is up in the upper left-hand corner. That's Sioux Falls' age distribution. You can see then the percent of cases by age group for the state of South Dakota, and we make up 85, we're 85% of the active cases and hospitalizations in the state. So, we're a very strong representation of Sioux Falls when you look at the state distribution. So, you can see that it's a younger demographic by far that is, you know, for the percent of cases. And so, these are younger people. They're able to better handle COVID by and large and not end up necessarily being hospitalized at the rates you would see for an older population. Because then, when you look at the lower left-hand corner and you see the percent hospitalizations, you can see that those being impacted are our elderly population when you see those hospitalized. We're not seeing those that are the percent of cases, which is our younger demographic, are not those that are being hospitalized. It's our older demographic. And so, that's why we're seeing such a flat number of hospitalizations right now. And I think what you can take from that is those populations that have been asked to stay home are greater than 65 or vulnerable populations. They've been doing that. They have effectively been mitigating the spread amongst that demographic and keeping themselves healthy and not in harm's way. And so, then you can also, you know, included the percent of cases resulting in death, and you can see, again, that's a really high demographic, and so there's a real correlation between hospitalization and death rate in those upper demographics, which is another reason why it was so important for them, for those populations, to really be taking this very seriously. So, bottom line, here's what I'm going to tell you. Right now, I feel that the data is still telling us that the ordinance that I'll just review again one more time with you is the best course of action at this time. But I'm going to tell you that daily and weekly, we're going to be continuing to monitor where we're at actually. And as soon as the GIS folks in our planning section of our EOC is ready to put a modeling out there, we'll bring that to City Council at an informational. We'll be regularly updating you as to where we're at so that you have the confidence to know that the decisions you possibly made today are going to, you know, you're going to feel good about that moving forward in the weeks to come, because we know a lot could change in the next two, three, four weeks. Okay? So, let's quickly, I'm just going to go through once again, you know, we've been, this work has really been a very big collaborative effort. First off, it's been a collaboration between administration and city council. I think one of you mentioned that last week when this was presented for first reading, that, you know, this was, I think maybe, Councilor Staley, you might have made mention of that, that there's been some collaboration between administration and the council regarding this policy. We also know our Board of Health passed this regulation last week. We also know that we have had tremendous input from our EOC partners and our SOAR team, and then Unified Command, of course, and Dr. Willdie and Dr. Elliott are here again this morning to answer any questions, along with Dr. Tingley. Jeff Ekoff is here. But all of these folks, we've all been working together to try and come up with the best way forward here. So, the definitions are listed, and I've talked through those in detail last week. I'm happy to, you know, at any time here in the discussion period, answer any additional questions you might have. But we specifically, of course, made sure that we were identifying what a party or parties meant, that seating is defined, because it's important to understand that, and that social distancing is also defined. So, then, the important thing to remember here in this section, when we talk about food service and we talk about what's allowed, is, you know, the 10 patrons is somewhat self-explanatory. That's very similar to the ordinance that's actually in place right now. But when we think about the number of patrons that can be in an establishment, it's really based on that social distancing principle, and it's based on the fact that, you know, you can have, the number of patrons that you'll be able to serve in your business restaurant, bar, et cetera, at any given time, will be dependent on your ability to be able to have people in a seated capacity at a table be six feet from the next seated party. So, the chair I'm sitting in and the person behind me at the next table, our chairs have to be at least six feet apart. And I would tell you, there's a lot of questions that are going to be asked about some of these types of, you know, what does this really mean for a restaurant? How does this work if I want somebody to get up and walk between those two tables to go to the bathroom, et cetera? And that's something that our SOAR group will work very closely. That whole initiative, Jeff Ekoff and Luanne's teams will be working with to try and help them understand, because bottom line, it's how you ensure social distancing and how you can be part of the solution in mitigating the spread that's going to be really important. And so, this is the best baseline of what we can come up with in ordinance, and then beyond that, we're going to have to really work together as a community to further understand how we make sure to mitigate that spread. So, a couple of questions, or here's a question that I got asked about, what if the six people that are in the definition of a party or parties, what if that no more than six people includes people from two to three households? You know, it's a question that we get. Again, people have to weigh for themselves when they decide that they're going to get together as a party, and they're going to go out into public, and they're going to go and enjoy a meal somewhere. They have to decide that level of risk that they are going to take for themselves. But they also are going to do so with the assurance that they're going to an establishment that is taking this very seriously. And I think that's something where, you know, the public is going to make that determination about whether they're going to be feeling comfortable going out, their level of risk and their level of understanding of how seriously an establishment's taking this. So, really, it really is up to everyone to understand this, but then also understand what social distancing really means and how they can apply that for themselves and for their places of business. So, then, the next section we have is really, you know, again, this is for those athletic facilities, health clubs, entertainment venues, and recreational facilities. And it was taking what's the best way that we can ensure social distancing will be able to be applied, and that's where we came up with the 50% for patrons as a maximum occupant load. So, they have to take their occupant load, and 50% of that is what we've identified is the maximum they can have allowed for any particular time period. So, at any given time, they cannot have more than 50% of people in patrons based on occupant load within their facility. And so, that's something that, again, they have to also be ensuring along with all businesses, I've said it over and over and over again, that social distancing has to be ensured. So, just because it's a 50% occupant load maximum allowable for your particular venue, it does not mean that you can perhaps shut down one section of your venue and then have everybody kind of in another section of the venue so you can cut back on the number of staff that you have perhaps helping serve that for that venue. No, that means you have to separate people. You have to have them socially distanced in parties, just like you, you know, would for, in a restaurant, for example. This is just in another type of venue. So, again, this is where SOAR will come in, be so important, and that group of folks that can help those businesses understand how to apply this ordinance. So, lastly, or again then, too, we have an enforcement mechanism similar to the current ordinance that's in place. And, you know, I've mentioned this before, but I think it's really important to understand that we've had great compliance thus far with our current ordinance, and we have no reason to expect we won't with this one if we all work together and do the best possible means that we can of applying social distancing principles, cleaning principles, hygiene principles, you know, making sure that your staff are not sick when they're coming to work, making sure that if you decide that you want all your staff to wear masks when serving or doing anything with customers, you should have your staff wearing masks. There is, that would be something that would be really encouraged if you so choose and think that's necessary for the protection of your staff. And if there's, we know there's businesses out there that are requiring that their patrons, people that come to their business, wear a mask, and we think, and I support that. There is no, I would say, any business that wants to require masks of their, if that's what they think is best, because that's then protecting their staff. Also, that's something that I would encourage and say would be very welcomed in our community at this time. And so, you know, I can't emphasize enough that while, yes, we will enforce this, we want this to be an educational opportunity. That's why SOAR was put into place, to be able to make sure that businesses have the tools, the technical assistance, the resources, the guidance accessibility to be able to do this effectively, and we would hope that we wouldn't have to be, you know, issuing any penalties for this. So, again, until we have a vaccine, until we have effective treatment that's reliable for COVID, this is going to be a reality for a while. And so, you know, we would, this doesn't have an end date on it, this ordinance doesn't. But make no mistake, if we need to make a recommendation for adjustments to this, we will be bringing that to you as a council. We will be talking to you and letting you know, and that's why I think sharing data, information on a regular basis is going to be really important over this time period. And so, just like we could have it end and re-up it, we can also change it when we need to and have it be regarded differently. So, with that, I just had a couple of, there was a couple of questions that have come to me in the last, like yesterday at informational, that I just want to mention, or at the last, the first reading. And one was about fumigation and wide spraying of businesses. And it actually, the EPA does not recommend the use of fumigation. I did check on that for you, or the wide-area spraying to control COVID-19. The guidance that's in there for cleaning of surfaces, et cetera, is what they would recommend, and so there isn't a recommendation, and they do not recommend any of that be done. So, and then, also, the cost of COVID, that was asked of me as well. And there is no cost to a patient to get a COVID test. That is, it may be charged to someone's insurance, but there is no cost to a patient, and if you're uninsured, there's no cost to you as well. And so, I just wanted you to be, that was a question that had come up yesterday as well. So, that's my presentation, Mayor, and thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jill. Is there anyone from the public who wants to speak on this item this morning? Come forward if you're here to speak for this item, please. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Joy Howe. On April 27, the Attorney General in Washington sent a memo to all of the state's attorney generals, and it was called "Balancing Public Safety With the Preservation of Civil Rights." And in that memorandum, and I'm quoting, he says, "But the Constitution is not suspended in times of crises." And two weeks ago, I did mention to you that the First Bill of Rights says we have the right to peaceably assemble. That has not been suspended. And all of these regulations on these restaurants, these event centers, these bars is unconstitutional. You cannot tell people they cannot get together in groups of greater than six. I have nine children. That means I cannot go out to eat with all of my children. That's a violation of my First Amendment right. And somebody's idea of safety does not preclude my personal liberty. I truly believe that these cities, Sioux Falls included, and these states that are violating people's First Amendment rights are going to get the living daylight sued out of them for violating businesses and people's civil rights. And I think you need to keep that in mind as you lay out more controls, keep the hammer down. That's what's going to happen. And it's constitutional, and it should happen. We are not children. We don't need more mommies and daddies telling us where we can go, when we can go, and why we can go, when to go to bed, when to get up. We make our own decisions. We take our own risks. And I think you need to treat people and businesses like adults. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you. Well, she's coming up. Jill didn't touch on this, but children are not included in the patron limit of this ordinance, so just want to make sure that's clear, minors 18 and under. Come forward, ma'am. Good morning.
My name is Natasha. I'm rather new to Sioux Falls. I'm originally from Aberdeen. So, I'm a former environmental health specialist, public health professional. I got trained with the CDC. There are certain things that possibly with the city council and SOAR that I didn't see enacted, because when I did my inspections for restaurants, the major key component was HVAC systems. And that's something that should be amended and included for people that are going to restaurants, because all HVAC systems are not inspected equally, I would say. And people should know what they're getting into. If somebody like this lady that might have an asthmatic child or something that wants to go, then, or her father might be diabetic or have a heart condition, they should know what they're sitting going into a restaurant possibly, and that's why I think giving them as much education and information as possible. And I think restaurants should have a flow of traffic of going in and out. When you, I've worked in restaurants since I was 14 as a second job, and there's, with a big population, a lot of people, large groups, they get up at once, and it's hard to move around them if you're going to the bathroom, going in and out. So, if you're going, for example, to the diner, it's hard to go in and out if there's a large group of people. So, I think that should be included as well. And I just wish that the SOAR program or component could implement infection control measures and how they're going to clean gyms, and if they're going to have disinfective available for the patrons and stuff like that. So, but, yeah, and I just wanted to give that as much as possible, because it is a risk that people take into component of going to restaurants or public places, but I think they need to know all the information as possible, just for the life and safety of people in our community. So.
Thank you, Natasha. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council. How are you all today? Over the last several months, we've had a lot of numbers thrown at us. And I'd like to point something out. Even Governor Cuomo in New York City, the most hard-hit place in the country arguably, even in New York City, the death rate from this virus is 0.8%. And when you factor in the whole state of New York, it's only 0.5. Okay? States like ours, I don't know what the percentage is, but I'm assuming it's lower even than that, except for maybe this hotspot here in Minnehaha County. You know, we've had three major pandemics in the last 20 years, I believe, and we've never responded like this. So, I still haven't received a rational answer to this question. Why is the nation so radically different in its response to this than the other pandemics we've had, which have been pretty serious as well? I guess we've had a lot of numbers thrown at us, so I won't, the numbers give me a headache. But just one more number I want to quote. Yesterday, Governor Cuomo at his press conference said, "60% of new cases in New York City are from people who were at home sheltering in place." So, maybe that approach needs to be reconsidered. I think this ordinance is a step in the right direction. I would hope that the council would consider going even farther in the near future. So, I would urge the council to vote for this ordinance because it is a step in the right direction. I'd like to end with a quote from Henry David Thoreau. "Most men live lives," and we'll include women in that, of course, "of quiet desperation." There are a lot of people living in quiet desperation right now. It's time to end these lockdowns. Life is a risk. Every morning, you know, I read one story once about a lady who got up, fell out of bed, landed on her back the wrong way, and was quadriplegic. But life is a story of risks. And, you know, anyway, so I urge the council to support this ordinance and consider going further in the near future. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this?
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mayor, city council. Jeff Griffin, President of the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce. And I know my colleague Deborah was here last week, and we remain in favor of this ordinance and also encouraged to hear Jill talk about, you know, the future of it, whether it has to be more restrictive or more loosened up. You know, when I interviewed for this job, the mayor was in that interview, and we talked about how the Chamber of Commerce and city interact through ups and downs. And what we talked about is, I didn't need a pandemic to demonstrate it to me, but it is real partnership in this community. And if you haven't lived anywhere else in the country, it is something very, very special here in Sioux Falls. So, I know I've spoken to some of you. So I know I've spoken to some of you and with the mayor. We have 2,000 members with 80,000, represent 80,000 employees. So obviously, we don't have unanimous opinions on, on the COVID-19 and how this should look. But what I'm seeing is so many of our members coming with new and innovative ideas, helping one another. They want personal responsibility with this. I'm looking at it as, we have some courageous business owners who are, who are ready to open with cautiousness. So sometimes courageous and cautious don't go together, but in this case, I think they exactly do. So the chamber is here to support your work, urge you to support this ordinance, and look forward to further steps we can take to keep us all healthy and keep the economy chugging. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else here to speak on this item today? All right, we'll move into our discussion. We'll start with, with any questions for, for Jill. I also wanted to point out, we got some other colleagues with us. Our Chief Medical Officer for the city is here, Dr. Tingley. Dr. Wildey with Sanford and, and Dr. Elliott with Avera are here as well. So, questions, Council, Councilor Staley?
First of all, I thank you, Jill Franken, for checking on those questions that I had. I did, after I brought up the issue of spraying, fumigating a business, I was contacted by someone who's working with the airlines who indicated that's how they're disinfecting the airplanes. So I understand that's not the practice that's recommended, but I think it is happening within our, our community, our life. And then I also was wanting to know, and I still, I understand insurance will pay for the tests and that the government's paying for the tests, but I really want to know how much a test costs? What, what is insurance being billed? I, I think that's going to be an important number to have. So, because at the, at the end of the day, somebody's paying for it. But can, can Dr. Wildey, are you looking, coming up here?
Good morning, Mike Wildey, Chief Medical Officer, Sanford Health for Sioux Falls. The cost of a test is, or the, the bill that's submitted for a test, I believe, is around $140.
Thank you. And then let me also say before we go any farther, in, in line with, with our mayor's three Rs, which is review, reassess, and realign. And he's, he's said that so, so eloquently in his press conferences. Review, reassess, realign. I will be proposing an amendment on this ordinance that is, the ordinance shall remain effective until June 5, 2020, unless extended, amended, or terminated by ordinance. And this would be an end date, a sunset, because I've, I've been, and I'm not saying this at this point, I'm not presenting this. But I'm hearing from people on both sides of this issue that want to have some kind of, of a reassessment. And to, I, I'm going to feel better, and I think I may have some support on the council to say, you know, let's, let's let this go until June, and then let's take a look at it again. So just to put that out there, I do have some other questions, but if someone else wants to ask something, I will.
Let me go to the, the phones next, see if any of the councils on the line have any questions for any of our experts here.
Mr. Mayor, I have one.
Go ahead, Counselor.
For Jill Franken.
Go ahead.
Jill, a little bit ago, you presented a chart that showed, part of the chart showed cases resulting in death. The percentages that were illustrated there, was that a percentage based on all cases? Or is that a percentage based on the age group?
I am grabbing my slide real quick here. Are you talking about the demographic side?
It had four slides within one, number of cases in Sioux Falls, number of cases in the state. And then you'd also had cases by age group, and you had deaths by age group.
I believe that that would be based on a percent of cases resulting in death. I think that would be all cases based on that age range. And of those who died within that age range. Does that answer your question?
So it's, so it's based on that age category then, the percentages listed for each category?
I believe, so I am gonna, I know that Albert is here. Albert, are you downstairs? Can you, why don't you talk through that slide?
Yes, this is Albert Schmidt here in the basement. Yeah, you are correct. So the percentage of the resulting deaths is based on the percentage of cases by age group. So you take that age group, so in this instance, in that first one, you look at there's 86 cases of 80-plus, and there's 15 deaths, and that results in that percentage of 17.44.
Thank you, Albert. Thank you, Jill.
All right, other questions for anyone? Counselor Erickson?
Just a few points of clarification. I know when I first looked at this death, the chart that has many different cities on it, and I saw some confusion in the audience as well, it's, that 9.4% is death per 100,000. So it's not the entire state, it's death per 100. So if we were to divide it by the number of people in our community, it's not going to be 9%. It's going to be way, way less. But that's how many deaths per 100,000. Oftentimes, some of the other larger cities will do it based on that 100,000 people to just kind of put into perspective. And so you can divide it by the number of people in the entire state. You can slice and dice it any way that you would, you would like. So I just want to make sure that there's some clarification that that's for the deaths per 100,000. I, I think it's important to note that we are trying to balance everything in this community, from health and wellness to deferred healthcare needs that have been occurring. My doctor's office called the other day and said, "You're up for well checks for your three kids." And I've never gotten a reminder from my doctor's office to have my well, it, it's usually just in my app, and I do it when it works for our schedule. But clearly, the day-to-day offices and the, the doctor's offices are not seeing people do their just general maintenance of healthcare. I've got a middle schooler that needs his shots, and I thought, I'll wait until August because it doesn't matter. And they're almost begging us to come in to get this taken care of. It's probably one of the safer places you can be in town versus maybe going to a grocery store even, because there's less amount of people there. So I just really want to stress to the community that now is not the time to push off your medical needs. I'll be taking my kiddos in next week or the week after to do their well checks as well. And we also want to really move forward cautiously. It's been referred to as not spiking the football. We are going to see the cases rise. Once we start getting those numbers from the, the site location at Washington, you're going to see those rise a lot. And that was the intent, to make sure we know who has those, whether they're asymptomatic or if they've got symptoms. We want to know, and we want to make sure we're isolating those folks to make sure it doesn't spread any further. The whole intent behind this has been to make sure that when you need care, you have care in your hospital. We're now seeing that we have the needs, the mitigation efforts have been working. We have the capacity in our hospital systems. So now's the time to make sure that we have the ability to jumpstart that economy a little bit, and also your mental health. I'm, I'm not a homebody person, and it's, it's tough on even my 15-year-old son, who says, "I just need to go drive the car, Mom." I said, "Go, go get ice cream, go do what you need to do." So it's important component of all of this, when you put people in isolation, you essentially are closing businesses down based on just the number of traffic. We've got to get back to all of that balance while still protecting the health and well-being of the community. So we all have a personal responsibility. If you don't feel good, stay home. If you're not comfortable going out, don't go out. If you are comfortable and want to go to your favorite restaurant, and you can bring your kiddos. If they're under 21, it, it's not in that six group. So you're welcome to bring your kiddos with you.
Eighteen.
Out for dinner. Eighteen, sorry, my bad, eighteen. So you can bring your, your kiddos with you. So I think it's important that we're making good decisions still. We're not spiking the football and getting too far ahead of ourselves. But we have to understand that we're in a different era now. I'm excited about the steps forward. I've taken a lot of calls, as all the council has, for people to be innovative in some of the steps. I said it a couple of weeks ago, some of the steps these businesses are making, paper menus, the foot grabbers on the bottom of the bathroom, their temperature testing, some of their staff when they come in to make sure that they're healthy. They're, they're taking some big steps forward. And so I thank them for that because they're doing that with you and I in mind. So I hope that this support is there, and I'm hopeful that we can just get back on track.
Counselor Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe to piggyback on a couple of comments by Counselor Erickson. Yeah, as far as, you know, taking care of yourself health-wise and maintenance-wise too. I remember I had my physical recently, and I was hemming and hawing about whether to go in because I was worried about, geez, if people are sick, are they all going to be at the hospital? And between going in for the blood test and going in for my physical, I don't think I ran into hardly one other soul. So if there are people out there that are scared to, you know, go and take care of your normal maintenance duties for yourself, for your family, or anything else, let me speak from personal experience, don't be afraid of that. So we're all anxious to get back to normal. Normal is a long ways off, but I do think this is a step in the right direction. And I hope we can take another step that direction soon. But again, we have to stay diligent. You're going to hear this over and over, kind of a broken record. But just please, folks, continue to play by the rules and play your part. Because we want to step, take a step in the right direction and take another step towards that soon. We don't want to take a step back. And if we get reckless and start going back thinking things are normal, we'll be back here real soon, kind of trying to wind things back, and we don't definitely want that. So again, keep doing what you're doing, do your best. And hopefully, again, that'll get us here, I will support this today. Jill, I think the only question I had, just to maybe remind folks, if they are in violation of this ordinance as it is passed, what is the penalty that is listed in Section 10.999? What is that again, exactly?
Would be a Class II misdemeanor.
Which is like a $500 fine or a?
Yes.
Just want to kind of, that's what it is?
Okay. A maximum.
Maximum.
$500 or 30 days in jail.
So there's a big variable to this? I guess I'm just trying to be clear so people know too, what?
Yeah, it would typically first offenses, well, it's, it's in the discretion of the court that would impose it. But, so typically, they're not $500, but that is the statutory maximum for a Class II.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor, start.
I was trying to catch you before you sat down again, I'm sorry. Up and down. Talk to us about the, where we're at with the Smithfield numbers. Because I'm, we're at that 48-hour, so is that all, the hundred and some new cases that you talked about earlier in your presentation today, what percentage or where are we at with, were those that, the positive cases that came specifically from the, the drive-through testing?
Well, that is not known. Because how the state will report out subgroups of populations is based on a cluster outbreak. And so at this time, we have not, they have not identified a cluster, a new cluster that has occurred as a result of Smithfield. This is, this is simply a community-based testing effort to get the operation up and running again. If they identify that there's truly an, a cluster outbreak that needs to be reported out, they will do so. And that would be true for any business, not just Smithfield. You've seen where you've, you know, you've seen other reports out that where they've identified for the public's interest and safety, where there have been clusters that have been identified, and that would be true. But right now, they're not going to break that information out specific to Smithfield as a result of this testing center.
Okay. Let me follow up on that a little bit. I guess then what I'm, part of it too, the quick answer is that testing was community-based. It wasn't just for Smithfield employees. They allowed other people who had positive potentially to, to go through that drive-through testing?
If they were in some way affiliated with an employee of Smithfield, like a family member?
Okay. So what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to go back to, because we keep talking about science and numbers and modeling and data. So I'm, I'm putting you on the hot seat, and I apologize for that, but I got to start somewhere. If we look at what the president outlined in Phase 1 openings, and, which came from guidance from the CDC, do we as a community meet those recommendations?
Whether it be recommendations based on getting back to normal or the president's recommendations, we also know of the data that we are collecting in our community. And so we know that we have had significant spread, and we've been using the guidance based on how to treat your community based on having significant spread in your community. At this time, I would not be confident to say that we should take any other action than the action that we're taking today through our city ordinance. And that's really the best answer I can give you right now, based on that. I think we have done a really good job in getting, doing a, taking really strong look at the data that we can collect, that we have accessible to us, and make some decisions based on that, that you are all regarding. And so I, I feel really, if there's any moment of pride here, it's that we have really tried to be very data-driven in this process. And, and so I think that based on our data in our community and what we have experiencing here, we've been told it's a local response and, and a local responsibility to, you know, manage through this time period. And that's what we're doing, and I think that's why you're seeing the recommendations you are today.
Appreciate that. One of the things we spent as a council some time last night talking as an employer with the transit system and the issues that they've gone through. They have one positive rider on a bus, well, the driver's now quarantined for 14 days. And, and the exposure that they have. So when we open up restaurants, my concern has always been not only for the business owner, but the employees of that business. So if someone tests positive, I go out for dinner with my family on Saturday night, I test positive, you trace back that I went to have dinner at a, a local restaurant. Is my server going to be quarantined for 14 days or recommended that they be recommended for 14 days?
Possibly.
The employees are going to go rather quickly in this case then, aren't they?
That is why mitigation efforts have to be strongly encouraged. That's why we have to take the proper actions that we do. That's why you have to think really strongly, like for example, that employee. If that employee is maybe someone who's older and someone who has extenuating health conditions is, is in that vulnerable population category, they have to really decide if, if, if that's the right work environment for them to take that risk along with you as a patron, participate, you know, going to that business as well.
So that leads perfectly into where I'm headed next then. Because what do we do with the employees who are 65-plus or have underlying medical conditions where it's not safe for them to go back to work? But if they don't go back to work, they're not going to be qualified for their unemployment benefits because their employers call them back. So you can make that choice as an employee that it's not a safe working condition for me, but now I can't feed myself.
People are making those choices right now. I, it's really no different than the choices people are making at this time.
So are we, as, as a city, with our employees, if we have people with underlying health conditions that are in the, whether it's age or emphysema or, you know, the things that asthma, are we calling them back to work? Or are we still allowing them to stay home and, and shelter in place, basically?
Well, you know, those are all guidances that are in our, part of our COOP decision-making process. But right now, I am aware that we have employees that are working from home. And as long as they're able to do so, we are, we are asking them, you know, we are encouraging them to continue to work from home. And, and I would not see that there would be a situation yet where employees would be brought back into the workplace that fit the category you mentioned, unless there was ample ability to socially distance them. I hope I'm speaking correctly on that.
I know, you happened to be there. I'll get Director Eckhoff in a minute, so we'll go that direction yet, so. But you've been working with this. So then if we are looking at opening up the community in the 50% guidance, are we looking at opening libraries? And I know we got some information about parks not making a decision for summer programs till the end of May on the 29th so that they could potentially open on the first of, or start leagues and stuff on the 1st of June. What, what's the recommendation that you're making from the Health Department perspective? Are we ready to open libraries and community centers and with some of these social guidance stuff as well as the services that we provide to our citizens? Whether it's the city hall or the admin building or those facilities?
Well, we know we have to start making decisions around that. Decisions haven't been definitively made yet. But we know there's probably some very creative ways that we can serve the public, like say through the library system. I know they're looking at some innovation in their space on how they can serve their patrons during this time while maintaining social distancing. So that's all. So that's all evolving and I think that's again, where you'll see us taking a very slow and measured approach to how we start reopening any of our facilities and serving the public again, which will start, you know, in the near term, but be very phased and deliberate and making sure that we're, you know, thinking about where the data is taking us along the lines of what we open up for our city buildings as well.
My theory, a quick assist on that too. City Hall and like City Center, May 18, they're going to start opening those buildings. We'll start opening those in a phased approach too. So we're, we have an opening plan for those as well. Yeah.
The other, this is a lot easier, I promise. Effective date, because I think there's a lot of businesses that are asking, when does this, if we pass this ordinance today, when can they open up and follow these guidelines? I think that's the, the real question that a, a lot of business owners have at this point.
Stacy, I believe tomorrow was going to be the date this would become effective.
Yep, it's effective on publication, which would occur tomorrow.
Okay, because that's one of the reasons that we're meeting at 10:30 this morning. I know there were some people who said, oh, why, you never meet at 10:30 in the morning and why then? And we're trying to make the publication deadline for our paper, newspaper of record to, to get that there. So just so that, again, there were plenty of people who thought they were open this last weekend and during the course of this week. So really, that's all I have for now because I think I'll address some of the other stuff during the, if there's a potential amendment.
Counselor Staley.
I, just for clarifications, if someone from the medical community would address the, the deaths that we heard about today at All Saints, are these, the deaths that we're hearing, are they happening in the hospital or are they happening within the facilities where these people live?
Mike Elliott, Chief Medical Officer to Ver McCannon. The, the deaths that we have seen within the, the city of Sioux Falls surrounding area have happened in both hospital and private locations. I can't give you specifics on the deaths that were reported this morning, but in general, some of the deaths are occurring in nursing homes, areas of that nature and others are occurring obviously in the hospital.
So they're not all going into the hospital?
Not everyone is going into the hospital. That is correct.
Have we known about some people who have died at home? And, and part of this, when we talk about hospitalization rates, these would be separate from that then. So death doesn't equate hospitalization?
Death does not necessarily equate to hospitalization, correct? And there is a process for notifying the state when someone passes away in, in their private home. Yes.
Thank you.
I'd just say I, I do value these guys, but I want to keep the questions relate to the ordinance if we can and not to death rates and deaths in homes.
Mr. Mayor, respectfully, I will say that we've, we've been hearing information from our Health Director about the deaths that have occurred, that, that was part of what you presented as the rationale for the, the facts moving forward. So if I need some more clarification for that, I appreciate the, the ability to ask those.
Okay, do you have another question?
Yes, I have, well, I have another, some comments. And, and we have been, of course, all of us hearing from constituents. I've spent time on the phone, answering emails, listening to people. Thank you for all of you who have come in today to testify and to those people listening in our community who have reached out on both sides of this issue. We are listening. We are listening to everyone. It helps us make the best decisions possible in each day. I had a conversation this morning with a, with a citizen and just to back off a little bit, I just wrote down that the one thing we can all agree on here is that this is a complicated issue that affects everyone. And, and a guy, I had two, two conversations on either side of this this morning. And one guy said to me, hey, you're opening this up and now, he says, I have no daycare, I'm a bartender, I'm going to have to go back to work. My kids aren't in school. No one's going to be here to help them connect to their schooling. And he, he says, I don't know what we're going to do for the summer. We go to the, the Girls and Boys Club. That's, we are not sure how many people are going to be accepted into that. And so he's dealing with his own personal ordering of, of taking care of his children. Another guy came at me and said, the Health Director shouldn't be telling us how to make, how to move forward with this. People have all sorts of, of concerns. So the daycare issue is one thing. I want, we need to clarify to churches that our city never told them to shut down, never told them not to have services. Funeral homes, never told that. And Jeff Ekoff has been so gracious in talking to the funeral homes about how they can proceed onward. It's that social distancing aspect of having the six feet apart. I understand the mayor and, and some of the team sports had a conference call this week talking about how they're going to bring that back in to let people have their ability to have soccer games and softball and, and get together that way. I'm hearing concern from people that they're saying, we're going to open up our businesses. Why aren't we opening up the libraries? Why aren't we opening up the community centers? Why aren't, if we're telling bartenders and servers and people that they're going to be going back to work, then we need to make sure our city employees are coming back to work as well. That's what I, I'm hearing that from the community. And Jeff Griffin, I appreciate, he might have left, but you know, he was the, the chamber guru there. He said, we need to be courageous and we need to be cautious. And so that's, that's the challenge for all of us is that we are trying to move forward and be courageous. We're hearing from people that this is an unknown, going to be cautious on, on this. I'm also very supportive of opening up elective procedures with these hospitals. And as Counselor Erickson talked about, just your regular checkups, I think that the public really wants to be able to do that. So that's a positive. So just a few statements on that. Thank you.
All right. Anyone want to make a motion on this item?
Moved to approve, Erickson.
Second sale.
All right. So now we got a motion on the floor by Counselor Erickson to approve it. Counselor Sale has seconded that item. Counselor Staley, did you want to introduce an amendment?
Yes, so I'm going to make, I'm making a motion and Jim, do we, I'd like to put that up if we can. So I'm, again, let me just restate one more time in, in alignment with what the mayor has talked about with his three Rs, to review, reassess and realign. I think that I would like to offer an amendment, a motion to amend by adding new Section 10 that will state the following. This ordinance shall remain effective until June 5th, 2020, unless extended, amended or terminated by ordinance.
Second, Starr. All right, motion on the floor by Staley on that, seconded by Counselor Starr. Self-explanatory, do you want to explain it anymore?
And let me, let me also say that when this, I was thinking about how, what kind of a term to put on this and I thought this gives us about a month into June 5th. If, if, if my colleagues would think less time would be appropriate, more time, I, I'm open to that. But I just think it's, from either side of this issue, I'm hearing people say, we want some kind of a, something more definitive about how this will be reviewed.
All right, thanks. Counselor Selberg.
I am hesitant to put a date on that because I have a feeling that people are going to be, business owners are going to be hesitant to put their foot back in the water or go full-throat or full-bore back at this, thinking the rug could get pulled beneath them at any time. I think this is being reviewed daily. I think we could be here again, again, five days or seven days like we have been with everything else and adjustment that's been made. So I don't think a review of everything that we've been doing or will be doing is any change or will be any different than we have been. So I want people or the message to be to folks that are getting back at it a bit that we're getting into it with an optimistic point of view and to go for it a bit and not have them be worried about the fact that, well, about the time we get a little bit of momentum that come June 5th or May 20th or whatever, this could all be taken away, given a deadline. So I will not be supporting. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Let me go to the phones first. I'll go to the phones and then Counselor Starr. Any of the counselors on the phone wish to chime in on this amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll go with Counselor Brecky and then I think that was Counselor Nitzer after that.
Kylie.
I, I've been, oh.
Got it.
I've been hearing.
Counselor Brecky and then Counselor Kylie.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. You know, initially, I liked the idea of just having no deadline on it and we could review as we go. But I did get a fair amount of feedback from people that are very much concerned about that. And I guess I share their concern that I don't think there's any harm in having a date that says, okay, we're going to review it. Because again, remembering that we're trying to bring the public along with us in this journey. When we meet, they meet. When we meet, they get information like they did from Jill today. And so to just say, well, we don't know when we're going to be discussing this again. There's a lot of people that really want to have that information, that reassurance that we're, you know, that, that the decision that we're making today is okay. And so I'm comfortable with the month. I think that's, that's really, that's long enough for business owners to, to stick their toe in the water, if you will. But it's also short enough for us to, to review it again with the public to make sure we made the right decision. And there's nothing in, in this amendment that would prevent us from, you know, reviewing it at any time in between that if that becomes necessary. So I guess I don't see any harm in it. I see good in it and that it, it allows the public to know that we are going to be taking a look at on this date and that's when they get to see the graphs and the charts that we maybe are seeing in our information meeting. But that's when they get to be brought along with us. So again, I see no harm in it. I think it's a good thing. And I, I do think it brings reassurance to those people who are concerned about the action that we're taking today. And in fact, we haven't seen the surge yet and, and we're, you know, we're taking the fact that this, this action to open up, you know, before we've even seen the surge. You know, I think it's just wise to have a date certain. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kylie.
Well, thank you very much. As, as Counselor Selberg had expressed, businesses are making a big investment in, in gearing back up. Number one, they have to hire staff back. Some of the, some of the staff they're hiring back may be actually on unemployment. And they have to order supplies to equip their business and their restaurants to reopen. So sunsetting this in a, in a one-month period, I don't think really instills a lot of confidence in our business owners that it's going to be much beyond that point. There's no certainty there. What I think there is certainty about is the fact that we will continue to monitor and assess the situation as, as it's impacted by the numbers that are reported every day. I do believe that information can be provided through the public and we can do that through our informational meetings at any point in time. So to keep, and I do think there is value in keeping the public up to date and that's what our informational meetings are for. So I would encourage that we don't establish a sunset, but I want to assure everybody that we are going to continue to assess this and base our decisions on the data. And those decisions, we, we can't state at this point whether it is to leave it as is proposed in, in this ordinance, to maybe loosen some of the mitigations that are in this ordinance even further. Or maybe we'd have to scale back. That's, that's a matter of reacting to the data. So I'm in favor of the ordinance as it is written. I would encourage my colleagues to vote no on the amendment. Thank you.
I'd like to ask Jeff Ekoff, Director Ekoff. Sorry to put you on the spot, but I think you may, I don't know if you have any input on this, Jeff? Have and talked with businesses of what businesses are saying? If that's what they prefer on this and what they'd like to see?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, Jeff Ekoff, Planning and Development Services. So when this becomes effective tomorrow, that is not a, a switch where people are going. Some people are ready to open, but there's a lot of businesses that we have talked to that are changing their business model entirely. And there are some that have ordered different seating arrangements and different. So there's, there's an investment and then there's a time period. They have to hire staff back. They have to, they have to order food. They have to get prepared. And so there will be businesses that have told us that once this passes, it's still going to be two, maybe three weeks before they actually open. And so if you push this to the fifth, that really doesn't give them a lot of time to implement and open and then test that before they feel like that, that fifth is upon them. So it could definitely impact their decisions on what they do. But they do, but it's not a, it's not an automatic opening. There will be some time that they need to prepare. And that's what we're hearing.
Thanks, Jeff. Counselor Starr.
Thank you. And I, I think a big part of what we're trying to make sure that we do today is that we do tell people what we're thinking and where we're moving as a city. I think Mr. Ringrose during his testimony made a really good point that life is about risk and you can fall out of bed and break your back. At the same time, life is also about managing those risks, whether we buy insurance, whether we take precautions to do things. And what I want to make sure that we do today, the message that we are sending to business, we're one hotspot away from sheltering in place. This goes back the same direction as it does to release and open things up. And if nothing else, that's the hardest part about being an entrepreneur, running a business, is again, managing that risk. We look at Sioux City numbers, in four days, they went to 1,000 cases. It happens fast and there's not a lot of time to react. We talked earlier, I did with the Health Director, talking about, you know, if we hire people back, what are we exposing them to? Are you going to be able to hire the staff and get the staff back to open? Managing, you know, it goes back to the same thing. Managing business is not an easy thing to do and managing that risk is not a thing to do. But by putting a sunset into this, it also gives us the other opportunity to say, hey, things are going great and we need to move forward and repeal all the restrictions. One way to look at this ordinance is we're opening the city up. Another way to really look at this is we're adding a lot of restrictions to businesses. And so we are, whether it's the 50%, I mean, we're balancing where we're pulling that number out. It's what other communities are doing around the country. It seems measured. What we do in government is we usually take the two extremes from the side of people who are still ready to shelter in place because they have loved ones that are, are at risk. And then the people who want to just open everything up and no restrictions at all and public health, we're on our own, we're grownups and, and move forward. And what do we do in government? We usually pick the middle road. We kind of compromise both sides of what we're doing and really this is kind of a compromise to both sides to, to stick our toe in the water. But the bottom line with this amendment, it guarantees that we'll be back before June 5th because we'll have to enforce this and continue to do that. Then the onus is on this body to do the right thing and to have that discussion. It's one thing to say, we'll have it, we will put these together. By having a sunset, it puts the onus back on us as a body that we're going to have two weeks from now, at least the start of a discussion of where we're at and what requirements we're going to have. It's sensible to add a sunset. It's everything else we've done in this pandemic time has had a sunset and it's forced us to come back. Last night, we put an amendment to the transportation resolution that we did because we felt it was important. If we have to, we've proven that we'll come back for the meetings that we need to have. We'll spend the time here to make, have the discussions that are truly important. And we need to send those, the message today again that this is a fluid situation. We're not in a positive spot where we can say, absolutely, here's the steps. Everybody wants certainty in this process and we can't give it to them. There isn't anyone that's giving anyone certainty. Go to your physician, as we've talked about. When's the last time they guaranteed that you had six months to live or that they can do things? It's still practicing medicine, still practicing law. But then we know we're going to have the discussion and that's really what this amendment is about.
Counselor, I'm going to go to Counselor Sale and then it's Counselor Staley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Starr makes some great arguments and I can take 90% of his statement and come to a different conclusion with that too. I agree that we need to reassess this on a continuous basis. I would take your discussion and come to the conclusion that if we put May or June 5th down, that the assumption would be it would stay into effect until June 5th and then we would have to make a decision. I believe the way that we've written this ordinance today takes care of that, that we will constantly reassess this on a basis and it, the public would certainly hold us accountable to those constant reassessments. If we put a drop dead date of June 5th on it, then the assumption would be they would see a reassessment at that time. I believe Counselor Starr, your argument, 90% of it, would lead me to believe that we constantly have to do that. we constantly have to do that. And if a week goes by and we don't provide these numbers again to the citizens of Sioux Falls, they'll say, what are you doing? And we'll really be under the gun. So that's, I like the way it's written today. I'm not gonna support the drop dead date of June 5th for those reasons.
Counselor Staley?
And of course, Counselor Sale, you could change that date if you wanted to. As I said before, I was just putting out something that I thought would be workable. If we look at where we started with this, we have had end dates throughout the whole process. There's been end dates and they've overlapped with new dates. That's all we've been doing is reassessing, but there's always been an end date. I've heard from business owners that want an end date. There's concern that this thing's gonna go on indefinitely with these, with restrictions. The concern I heard from Counselor Kylie and that I've heard from Counselor Selberg is that we're gonna be sending a bad message to the business community. And I would say, it's not gonna be a bad message unless things really get bad. Okay, if things get bad, yes, it's gonna, it might be something where we're gonna have to reassess in June and say, you know, this isn't working. By that point, I think some emergency clause would be put in anyway. But if things are going along nicely and we reassess this thing, then we tweak the ordinance and it's a fluid situation as we've been dealing with since the start. So to me, it makes sense. I did hear from people, they wanted this to happen, so I'm making an effort, you certainly are welcome to vote it down. I certainly accept that, but at least I'm trying to say that this is something I've heard. I think that it would, would be a responsible action to add this. And I said it actually when this conversation started a week ago, I believe, so, yeah, a week ago today, we had a conference call in the morning and the mayor's office called us and said, can we talk? I thought that was fabulous, but I stated during that conference call that I think we needed to have an end date on this. So I've been saying it all along. I think it makes sense, it wouldn't hurt anything. So just trying to put that out there for the benefit of our whole community, thank you.
All right, before I call for the vote, any final comments from anyone on the phone?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Kylie?
First of all, I'd just like to clarify, I did not state that it sends a bad message to businesses. What I did state is that it, I believe having a sunset creates uncertainty. There's certainly a difference there. And I'll also point out to my colleagues that have spoke in favor of a sunset, that in addition to our regular Tuesday night meetings, some have recently landed on Wednesdays, but in addition to our regular meetings, we've had numerous special meetings that have been called. And some of those special meetings were called prior to the sunset of the previous ordinance, which demonstrates that we have been as nimble as we possibly can, as the law allows us. And it does also indicate that we are reacting to the data, to the facts based on the matter. So I do not see the necessity of including a sunset. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, hearing no other comments, I think we're ready to call for a vote on the amendment, please.
Counselor Member Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
No.
Kylie?
No.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
No.
Sale?
No. All right, that's a tie 4-4, so my tie-breaking vote will be no. So that item fails, five to four. So we're back to the original motion as put on the floor by Erickson and seconded by Counselor Sale. Counselor Sale?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a, I would tell you that I am going to support this ordinance as it lays in front of us, but I'm extremely nervous for the situation that we're in. It has been constantly fluid, changing by the day, changing by the hour, and we have ended up at the point we're in. I've made my decision based on the information that I've got from the medical community because if we roll the clock back to when we first started about this, it was about they could not handle the number of hospitalizations that were predicted at that time. And we needed to slow the spread and flatten the curve. Now today, we sit here and our healthcare organizations feel very confident they can handle the number of hospitalizations projected. We still are gonna have deaths in the community. We still are gonna have hardships in community. Businesses are gonna fail whether we pass this or not. But based on the data, based on the information that our healthcare providers have given us throughout this, they feel confident and even though I'm very uneasy with where this thing is gonna end up, I am gonna support it for those reasons.
Thank you, Counselor. Any, any final comments on the phone on this item? All right, seeing none, I think we're ready to call for a vote on this, please.
Counselor Member Starr?
No.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that item passes, seven to one. Can we get a motion to adjourn, please?
Second.
All right, motion adjourned by Starr and seconded by Erickson. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed? We are adjourned. Have a good day, everyone, thank you.